Hi, good afternoon. Today is September 22nd. It's 5:04 PM and we're going to call this meeting into order. We will start with the flag salute. And can I please ask, Parsa, will you please lead us into the into the flag salute today?
Sure.
Just lead us.
This is the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Make sure, I pledge allegiance
The flag.
to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Parsa. That was lovely. See, you learned something. Thank you for doing that for us today. Okay, so we are, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, um, I have, we're gonna do a public comment. I only have three letters.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hacker, you need to take a vote.
Yes. May I please, thank you, Mrs. Kraschara. I'm so happy you're here with me. Okay, may I please have a, all those in favor and approving the agenda, please raise your hand?
Aye.
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 That's five zero. Okay, let me switch over.
Report of closed session action.
Yes, could we have that, Dr. Braggie, while I switch over into my public comment area, please?
Sure. Not too long, because we do not have any action to present in closed session.
Okay. Here we go. All right, I've gone so many public comments or comments since, and now it's buried, of course, somewhere in the bottom. Okay, here we go. Hello, board members. Thank you for your hard work through these strange times. Though I really urge you to be an influence, the high school to give students less screen time, students are on screens for up to 10 hours each day with Zooms and homework. On top of that, students now want office hours, have to be on Zooms for longer Friday mornings. Many schools are doing synchronous and in synchronous days. Sorry, my screen is flick flickering here, but two days of Zooms, two days of independent work and an office hour day. Many districts across Los Angeles can't have shorter days where they do our long Zooms and have the rest of the school day for independent work, as well as LAUSD high schools, I'm getting a day for office hours and no Zooms. I'm begging you to make a change. Do what you were elected to do. Students are suffering and complaint after complaint. You guys read these public comments and don't talk about it. Please talk with Mark Mead and come to an agreement, less screen time as an option. It feels like the world is closing in and nothing is happening. Talk to Beverly administration and do something. Come to an agreement with Braggie if you can. For the sake of the people, you took the oath to serve. Do something. And this comes from Carl Lipton. Thank you for your comment. The next one, during the last board meeting, I was quite touched by Mrs. Marcus's recounting of growing up as the only Jewish family in a small town in the Midwest. Her passion for protecting our student, our district from antisemitism was born of the history and is exactly what needs to be taught to our to our kids. There will always be an outsider, a family who is culturally different or kids who don't fit in. That's why teaching anti-racist and inclusive material is profoundly important. We are blessed with a fantastic board and administration that works tirelessly for our kids. Let's put our differences aside and come come to this issue with diligence and empathy with an ultimate goal of supporting all races, genders, religions with equality. Please don't run from ethnic studies or use it as a political lightning rod. Embrace it. We are in the, we are in a unique position because of the collective history of of so many in our community to create a curriculum that has become the gold standard for other districts in California, free of bigotry and hate, that will empower our children to become the leaders our country and this world so desperately needs right now. Thank you. And this comes from Melinda Wade, a Beverly Vista parent. The next email reads, Dear Doctor, Dear Dr. Braggie and School Board Members, we would like to begin this letter by honoring the memory of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who passed away on September 18, 2020, from cancer at the age of 87. She was an inspiring inspiring advocate for equality and now is more important and more, and now is an important time than ever for us to continue her legacy of standing up and fighting for equality and justice. This tragic loss, along with the fact that Trump has recently stated he wants to push for patriotic education in our classrooms, even stating that a twisted web of lies is being taught about systematic racism in America, calling it a form of child abuse, is further an incentive for us to keep fighting to diversify our narrative. With that being said, once we are once again requested the board vote on a Beverly Hills High School Diversifier Narrative Chapter Board Resolution we have presented, now is such a critical time to teach our children to be inclusive and anti-racist and inclusive and anti-racist. And it is crucial that this board resolution is voted on as soon as possible. The resolution is quite simple. It calls for an anti-racist book by 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 poke, sorry, by POC author to be implemented into our curriculum as the first step. We have recently a great deal of support for this program so far, and we believe that the next step is to take passing this resolution. We understand that two board members just requested this to be on the agenda. We are respectfully requesting for the resolution to be added to the agenda for the next October meeting. We have attached the resolution to this letter as well as a list to petition for signatures. Although not directly related to Diversifier Narrative Campaign, we would like to share our thoughts on AB 331, the Ethnic Studies Bill. We have noticed criticism regarding possible antisemitism in the bill. We have taken the these complaints very seriously because we want to assure that anything we support is fully inclusive to all groups. We have done a great deal of research on AB 331, and we would like to share that this critical information, since we are not sure if everyone is up to date on it. After the initial version of the Ethnic Studies Curriculum was released last year, thousands of complaints were made. And just and because of these complaints, the bill was, has undergone a year of extensive revision to assure that it is free of bias and inclusive to the Jewish community. Now, after now, after the revision, many Jewish organizations are in full support of the bill. As members of the Diversifier Narrative, we we believe that the Ethnic Studies should be absolutely a requirement because it is crucial to teach students how to unlearn their racial biases and make sure that they are knowledgeable on the extensive, on the extensive cultural history that has shaped this country in a non-white washed academic environment. Also, for those still skeptical. I'm sorry to interrupt you, that was three minutes. Thank you so much. So this letter was submitted to us by Georgia Evanson, and it will be entered into the record. Thank you for your comments. And that concludes public comment at this time. Um, I just, that's it. I don't have any more public comments. We are going to now go to Student Spotlight. Dr. Braggie.
Thank you very much. So we have, we're excited to be able to bring back some opportunities to our board meeting now that we're in full swing to celebrate what matters most, and that's our students and our staff. And so we've invited Mrs. Decatrelle here this evening from Beverly Hills High School to make a public announcement that is very exciting for our school district and for the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Braggie. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Kim Decatrelle. I am the Assistant Principal of Instruction at the high school. And it's my pleasure to be with you to announce the 2021 BHHS National Merit Semi-finalists. Out of 1.6 million PSAT test takers, only an average of 50,000 of the highest scoring students are recognized. Of those students, only one third qualify as semi-finalists. Tonight, we are proud to honor three of our BHHS students who have achieved this distinction. They now have an opportunity to qualify for national merit standing and scholarship, and they represent some of the highest scoring students in the entire state. The following students have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation due to their academic achievement and excellence. Please join me in congratulating National Merit Semi-finalist Parsa Farnad. Parsa. Virtual applause. Parsa, would you like to say a few words?
I want to thank everybody for congratulating me today. And I want to thank all the teachers that have encouraged my drive for the entire time I've been in school, because without them, I would not be in the place I am today. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, teachers. Yeah.
Thank you, Parsa. Congratulations. Congratulations also on becoming a National Merit Semi-finalist Nicholas Walker. Nick, would you like to say a few words as well?
Yeah, please. Well, first, I'd just like to say that I'm immensely appreciative that the National Merit Program continued to operate throughout the pandemic, and that Bradley, who could and I can represent the National Merit Scholars of Beverly Hills High School. I'd also like to congratulate my two classmates, who I haven't seen in over six months, for what they've accomplished. And thank you, board, for the generous recognition.
Congratulations, Nick. We are also very happy to congratulate National Merit Semi-finalist Bradley Moon. Bradley Moon, unfortunately, he is unable to join us as he is a student of the Ed and Marie Edelman Chamber Music Institute with Colburn, and he is at rehearsals. But we are so proud to honor the three of you this evening. Please know that the district has mailed each of you a certificate recognizing this outstanding achievement. And congratulations, we look forward to seeing your next steps as you apply to colleges and continue your progress toward your higher education goals.
Thank you, Mrs. Decatrelle, for being here, and for the students, again, for making possible for us to congratulate you on this big achievement. You are to be congratulated, and I believe that you raised the bar for others, and you also put us on the map. And so I thank you for being students of our district. I think it's always a great thing to celebrate your success amongst us. So thank you. At this point, I'll go around the board. If anybody else has any further comments, congratulations, Ms. Walker Schuman. Gee, I wonder why? Congratulations.
Yeah. Very much. Congratulations. Parsa, it's good to see you again. I haven't seen you since theater days. You kind of look like my son now, with the whole grizzly Ben thing going on there. I know that dates me. I know that dates me. Oh, anyway, so you guys are an example of kind of where our district needs to be more often. So it's important to spotlight students as yourselves, because when we're trying to do what we're doing here on the board, it's to get, it's to get more of our students up at your level, and to understand the importance of of those achievements for now and for the future. So thank you for continuing to set a great example for all Normans everywhere.
Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Spitz.
I I second the comments of my colleagues on the board. I'm so proud of these students, great achievements. And and I think that it it is, it is an indication of how well we are doing in this district, especially at our middle school and our high school. We, we, we are really delivering a quality education to our students. And these are, these are just three examples of the results.
This is Walker Schuman.
So it's always a happy occasion to be able to celebrate student achievement. I am so proud. Sorry, my cat wanted to make comments, too. I'm so proud of all of you. I'm grateful for you and your consistent, hard work, all three of you, and for representing Beverly Hills High School in such remarkable fashion. So thank you. Keep reaching for the stars. We're really proud of you.
Mrs. Marcus.
You bring great honor to Beverly Hills. It's a marvelous thing to see three such marvelous students who have achieved so much. The hard work that you put in really has paid off, and I'm glad that you were able to be with us tonight. Russ, acknowledge you. I just want to mention that it isn't only academic excellence that goes into this award. It involves many other things, such as community service and other items. And for this, you are to be very, very proud. So you make us proud, not only with your academic achievement, but with your contributions to our community and for your community service. And we thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Braggie.
Thank you, Mrs. Hacker. The recognitions like this could not be possible without the incredible innovative teaching that is happening throughout our school district. And so another thing that we're going to be bringing back is our teacher spotlight. There's so many things. We have so many people to invite to share with you over our board meetings this school year. And so I would like to kick us off with Mr. Allen, Principal of Beverly Vista Middle School, who will introduce Mr. Safi.
Good evening. I have to tell you, I am so proud of to see the achievements of our high school kids. And Nick, gosh, it seems like just yesterday you heard Elrond Ayo. I can't even, didn't even recognize you. I'm so proud. I want to say that those, those kinds of achievements are not accidental, and they are a reflection of some amazing instruction that goes on in our classrooms. And, and I, this year, we've had robust instructional conversations around our entire middle school. And we were able to bring in three brand-new history teachers this year into our school. And one of them, Zachary Safi, has, has really shown himself to be an instructional leader, not just in his department, but also supporting other departments. And he's brand new to the district. And so I asked him, he developed a website for our history department for his eighth grade curriculum. And I asked him to come on tonight and to give us a preview of kind of the the amount of rigor and kind of what what happens in his classroom that I thought was just so exceptional. Mr. Safi?
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you. And thank you so much, you guys, for having me. I'm so excited to be here. And I just love being in Beverly Hills. All right. So we have high expectations here, and we'd like to go even higher. So I'm going to share my website with you guys just for a few minutes, so you can see it right now on the screen. We'll go ahead and just start right here. Okay, this is the start. At the top, you'll see the various topics that our whole department has decided on. First Americans, colonization, 13 colonies, up to the Constitution. So this is our semester one. And how does it start? I designed this so it can be engaging and fun for students, as well as in-depth and interactive. So we start off here with some words. It's a short summary that supplements our TCI textbook. But the problem was, I noticed at Beverly Vista, was I wasn't going to have time on Zoom to do all the textbook. So how do we get through this in a 40-minute section while going in depth for more creative, fun activities? So here we have some words, some maps, just simple stuff as we talked about migration. And here it is. All right, you guys, we got to watch two videos. If you want extra credit, go ahead and watch this third one. And this is a kind of incentive to get kids, you know, to kind of go further, to reach another step that maybe they wouldn't have before. So we go again, we're on the next notes. And by the way, students are following along with these lecture notes, so they're completing as we go. Here's a map that we're looking at, and then an optional video. All right, but here we go. We start with the textbook. This would be TCI 1.1, the Arctic Natives. And so here we provide maps, pictures, but also videos that the students get a pick from. So autonomy, mastery, and purpose, that was the design behind this. Having students have the ability to pick their own learning, you know, choose their own path. Many students loved this video. I'll give you 10 seconds. Right here.
We need to know a little something about being cool. Radiate body heat, which moves around the igloo by convection.
Many students loved this video. They said, I didn't know an igloo could keep you warm. That's crazy. Okay, then we go on here to the eastern woodlands. Maybe you were more interested in this one. So you can become a specialist in your certain region. Okay, so maybe they wanted to do the Iroquois tribe, or they were calling it Iroquois. And I said, no, no, you guys, we got to get some of these names right. Okay, so here we are. Maybe the plains were quite popular. Students said, I want to learn all about the buffalo. Okay, great. So as you scroll down, you have options. So we're taking notes, and then each student was asked to go back and specialize in one region, to watch a certain amount of videos, like, you know, 15, and then they could go above and beyond, which many students did. Okay, so this is something for California Indians. We have here, I said, you guys, which ones are local to Beverly Hills? Which ones fit in your area, you know? Oh, I don't know. So we're guessing. The Chumash? Okay. No, Gabarino. Here we are in the Pacific Northwest with totem poles. Okay, but, and then the little quiz at the end. So we were able to do that first section in 40 minutes on a Zoom, which was really, really cool. They took this little quiz at the end. And then we go on our five-minute break for Zoom. All right, guys, and we got to come back, because we got, now we got to do our research. Okay, so they're looking at, where is this? Is that in the Arctic? No, where is this? Okay, but that's not where it ends. That's just day one, level one. Up here, we have different things like maps, PowerPoints. But I really wanted to make sure that our kids are that high-quality, top-notch, making modern connections, stuff that there is no textbook for yet. Okay, things like this. So students can pick and choose, like the Washington Redskins. Is that racist? Should they have dropped the name? And then you give both pro and con, people who say it is racist, people who say it's not, just a sample.
One of the most controversial team names in sports history is being removed. Washington DC's football team has announced it will drop the term many Native Americans have been saying for years is just racist.
Wow. So one student told me, that was her favorite activity she did this year. She said, that was my favorite thing, um, politics. And we're going to end in just a second, but this was the most popular. How is COVID-19 affecting our Native American populations today? And what kind of issues are they facing? And many students chose this section, and we have samples later. But I mean, they pick this, and they're learning about it. Because, you know, we're going from history, you know, all the way to the modern connections, you know, and asking them some big stuff, some harder or personal connections, you know? There's so many different options. Like, if a student finishes early, go ahead, man, go ahead and do the personal connection. So it's a way for me to differentiate. It really helps English learners, advanced learners, learners with disabilities, so they can go back and watch these videos. And in that way, I've really been able to have some fun and effective classes where, you know, the kids don't seem to be like, too much, because they get a pick and choose. So they seem pretty happy and not too many behavior issues. So that is some of the things I just wanted to share with you guys to show at Beverly Vista, how much I love it.
Thank you, Ms. Happy.
Can I just tell you, when I first saw, when we first started talking, like, don't you want to take his class? I mean, don't you just want to sit in that class and like be a part?
Thank you.
It's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safi. I'm glad you were here tonight to showcase your, you know, what goes on in your classroom. And I would sign up to take your class. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Zach, very much for coming tonight.
Have a great day. Are you going to join us? You're welcome to join us. We're going to move on with our agenda. We're going to the consent calendar. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent calendar.
Mrs. Hacker.
There are things that need to be pulled.
Okay, so you can.
I'll second it. Are there anything to be pulled?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 10B1.
Anything else? Is that it? Okay, so I'll amend the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 10B1.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Discussion. Mister, did you want to make a motion?
Motion to approve item 10B1, the articulated personnel report.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
No, I'm just going to refuse myself from the agenda from the report.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that item before we move on? Yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes 4-0. Thank you. Moving on. I have a motion. Oh, we have, we are under reports. Dr. Braggie.
Thank you very much. I know we started, we we recognized students at the high school level. We just had a whole school teacher that was recognized in our spotlight. And before I go over my report, I had the opportunity, I was speaking with kindergarten teachers at Hawthorne and had a great conversation with them about their successes and challenges in their instruction. And so my plan on Friday was, I was going to go into each classroom and just check it out. It was really excited that they invited me. And I only made it to one classroom because I just couldn't leave. So I'm going to have to go back and go back and see some of the other teaching and some of the other instruction. But I want to thank Jocelyn Breznik for, she really brought me to tears in her classroom and what she was able to do and how she was able to manage five-year-old students, you know, among our youngest learners, with the Zoom technology, with providing options for them to break up the, you know, the screen time and to let them personalize their learning through their choices. And it was just astronomical. I want to thank the parents as well for providing that type of support and environment for their students to be that successful. But it was like watching a symphony, the way that Ms. Breznik was able to maneuver that classroom with those students in the way that she did, and still personalize that instruction where every voice was heard multiple times, every student. And it was just, it was just masterful. So it was a great reminder as a superintendent that that is a primary focus of my job, and that getting into classrooms like that to see how hard our teachers are working is definitely a priority for me this school year. So I just want to do a quick shout out to Ms. Breznik for that. So thank you so much. And sorry I stayed so long. I stayed over an hour. So let me go into just a little bit of some new information for you. And I'm going to start with the recent change that has happened with the state of California that also then impacted LA County. And so we have been moving into a new system with the new metric system. And it wasn't until just this week where the county was able to transfer over and we're starting to use the same numbers. And it was very confusing for people in the past, but we are using the same conversion now as the state. And so it took a little bit of time, but we know that everybody is working really hard at the state and county level. So with the new tier system, I just, I get a lot of questions about this. So I want to be really clear about where we are. And it's, you know, we were looking at, to get off what was called the monitoring list before, is now down to two metrics, and it is looking at the number of positive tests that are given in LA County, and then also the daily cases. And keep in mind, too, that the daily cases, this data comes in and it's collected, and it's usually between 10 and 14 days behind. So we are, we're seeing a really good trend with the numbers. And there is a little bit of caution with Labor Day. And there is a little bit of caution with Labor Day behind us. Some of those tests may be catching up with us in the next few days, but, but we're on a really good path here. So I think the most important takeaway that I'd like for you to have from this particular graphic is the, that we are in the purple, we are part of LA County, and we are in the purple zone in that tier. And so I just want to explain because there, there's always a lot of questions around, you know, the shifting of tiers. And so, and it's confusing because the state started with, with a monitoring list and then, and then kind of converged into a different system. So there's still a lot of question about that. So I, it's the number one question I get wherever I go. And so I do want to make sure that I'm able to answer that for you now. So much like the monitoring list, and it was the six metrics before, now it's the two. Is that the widespread purple tier that we're in, once we are at the point where we are, you know, more than 8% for the positive tests, more than seven, that is, that keeps us into the purple zone. When we are more than 8% positive tests, which were below, which is, that's great. And then I'll share with you a map where we are today in just a second. But this purple area is, is kind of like the monitoring list in that we have to, we're in this tier. And once we are below the seven and below the 8%, people automatically think that we're going into this red tier, and that is, that's not true. So it's much like the monitoring list in that, that once we meet the, you know, the seven or below and the, the testing, which we already have, that we are here for 14 days, 14 consecutive days. We have to stay here to make sure that we still meet that criteria. So that's 14 days. Then we're allowed to move into the red tier. And so the red tier, and this is where there's been some question. The red tier is a place where we need to be for an additional 14 days. So, so we're still like, we're still actually in purple. So we have the 14 days in purple until we meet the, the standards to be able to move. But then we have to, we have to wait 14 additional days. And so really, once we meet that criteria for 14 days, it's just not an automatic move into red. You, you have to, we're kind of in red because we're meeting the, the metrics. But you're technically not allowed to move until you have that additional 14 days. And so that's when the county will then provide some direction on what that opening looks like. It's very unlikely at that point that the county is going to say, you know, everybody come back. Because that would not be controllable. It would be really difficult to manage. So there will be a, most likely a slow kind of roll in of what the programming will be for, for our classes. So I just want to be really clear because I know that there's a lot of confusion around it. But, you know, the monitoring list is much like that 14 days that we had prior. It's just now it's, you still stay in purple and then you have to prove that you're off for 14 days. But you can't move tiers until you have an additional 14 days. So after that time, so really, to put it frankly, I mean, if we're, if we're looking, you know, it's not going to be before 28 days before they start to look at a new program to start, you know, letting more students and cohorts into our schools. It's just, it's just not going to happen. As we've reported before, the county supervisors have alluded to the fact that it would probably be in, in November or sometime where they would then begin to open to another cohort of students to be determined. And so, and they have not provided that information as of yet. So I just want people to kind of benchmark where we are, but you know, certainly nothing's going to happen in the next month. So I want to go over, I think that, you know, a lot of people are saying, you know, what, what are you doing to prepare for, you know, our reopening physically? And so there's a lot that's happening. We've talked at board meetings before about the think tank of experts that we've tuned into. We are working every day with public health. We're working every day with people in the county and also in the city and our fire department and our police department. And we stay really connected with, with everyone that is, in, has some sort of connection with our school district all the way up until the state. So our first and foremost responsibility in this reopening is to meet the public health order. That's our responsibility. That's on us. We have to show that. We have to show compliance to this public health order. What's been difficult is, I've reported before, is that it's, it's always changing. And so we've spent a lot of time, we are further ahead than most districts in this area as far as our readiness and our preparedness. But the, the public health order covers these areas. So we're protecting students and staff. We have to ensure and measure what physical distancing looks like and success in that area. The infection control, the communication to parents, and just access to our critical areas and, and students that we provide service to. That's basically what the public health order says. So one of the first areas is protecting students and staff. We have a COVID-19 containment and control plan, which is made up of district and school site administrators along with, and I'll show you the list in just a second, with our, with our nurse for the district at the high school. We have our protocols in place for what happens when there is a positive test and how that's handled. In, in, in the, the protocols that we are to move quickly and swiftly when somebody is considered to be positive. Where they go, how they're transported home, whether it's students or staff, we have a plan in place for either scenario. We also have a scenario and a plan for if there's a cluster of cases, which is now considered to be more than three. And that is, then we are seeking help from the public health department in how we handle that. There's the contact tracing that's in place so that we can do the best that we can to get in contact with those people that may have been in contact with somebody that is COVID-19 positive. We have to be ready for, if we do reopen physically and have students back and staff, what happens? If we have a number of cases where we have to shut down again, we have to prove to the county that we are able to close in a manner that is done in a positive way and in a safe way to not interrupt our, our operations. Testing program is what we're spending a lot of our time with now. And you've heard a lot of things, I'm sure on the news about testing. And it's, you know, it, it's very difficult right now to even find a provider that is willing to assist school districts. We are fortunate that we started our work very early, several weeks ago. And so we have had the opportunity to interview a few different organizations to see what will be the best fit for us and our students. And so we are, again, way ahead of the curve as far as testing. And, and we also want to be able to provide that testing opportunity, you know, for our students if they are in a position where, you know, they need some additional help or if there is a, a family that's, that's looking for testing. We're working with a company that's really flexible about how to provide that service. We're also working with our employee groups so that we can ensure that, you know, that we are providing, they call it surveillance testing. I like to look at it more as, you know, a plan in place so that staff feel safe and comfortable. And so that's testing on a regular basis. We're working with our vulnerable employees, those employees that may have some underlying health conditions over the age of 65 so that we can begin to look at our opening in the way that it's going to be done so that we can handle that in a, in a very safe, methodical way, but also in a way that, you know, we're providing the care that's necessary for our staff and for our students. And then we're also looking at the use of our non-school facilities for non-school purposes. Right now, the, our school district is providing services for the city preschool, which is under a different license. So that's under an early childcare license. As well as our youth sports is also an area, that's a cohort that's being allowed back in. So we're working with our coaches to look at what conditioning would be for our students. And we're closed though to everything else that's happening. So, you know, they, like our camps with our cities and, you know, people that want to provide some sort of instruction. That is closed because we have a small group of students that are already on campus and, and we're waiting for the next county order that will include what that next group will be. This is the district team that I talked about. It includes every school, as well as I said, the district office, because we need to be really available. This is the kind of thing that, once something is brought to our attention, it needs to be handled in a very consistent way. And so training is going to be happening with all of our principals on how, how things are handled, whether it's a positive case or whether it's someone that is showing symptoms. Those are handled differently. And so we'll be providing training for this team on when students and staff are coming back full time. And also some things that are happening that are actually happening now, because we do have some employees that are back in our schools. And I want to thank everybody for coming to work and, you know, in helping us. What's been really fantastic is this opportunity that we're having staff in the building. We're finding out that things that we're doing right and things that we need to, to have some improvement. I just had a teacher share with me that something wasn't being done when it comes to cleaning a certain area. And we were able to jump on that and, and fix that. So there is a benefit right now to having this slow kind of roll in, even within our employees. So right now, our employees are screened every day. It's done remotely. And it's done before you get to the site so that if you do have any of those symptoms that you are not coming in to work. We have our required six feet physical distancing at, at any place that, that, that people are. That's going to be something that when we share the programming and the changes for next year, we will have a list of expectations. That will be one of them for sure, is the six feet physical distancing. Also, the masks is going to be required for anybody that's over the age of two. The visitors is going to be limited. We are trying to keep people that need to be in the schools in, in cohorts that are, you know, less interrupted by visitors and, and other people that might not necessarily need to be there. We're trying to keep that, you know, on a limited basis only. We have signage for each of our schools. We spent a lot of time with the think tank and used a lot of that information. We have walked these sites. We've miles put on walking our sites and stairwells and, you know, elevators and, you know, optional areas. We have the signage that we have, we've created. We have ordered and it should be in by the end of next week. So that will be going up. We're excited about that. That includes markings on the floor, on the stairwells. The facilities being disinfected on a regular basis. That's also a way for us to protect students and staff. And then also sanitizer, hand sanitizer, which is something that will be in every classroom under the supervision of the teacher, depending on the age of the students. This hand sanitizer will be, you know, depending on the level of where the student has access, will be in common areas as well. I do want to point out that, you know, the state in the very beginning said that they would be providing school districts in the state of California with some PPE. And so we've had it for quite some time. We're ready to distribute it to our schools so that they have it on hand. But it's, it's everything. We have hand sanitizer, which is, you know, multiple for every classroom and every teacher. Each student and staff will receive a couple of masks. These are the cloth masks. These are actually not too bad of quality. We have some additional PPE. If, if some people feel like they can't wear a mask, we do have some of the shields that we have for some people that would prefer to have that. We are ordering the gowns. Some people that are working with students that need to be fully protected, besides just the facial area. We have our shields, but we also have gloves and we have our gowns as well. We also have ordered, because the state did not provide this, but there is a drape that goes underneath some of the shields. And so that's going to be required for working with some of our students. And some of our staff that are, are working with some students that, that may or may not be able to keep on a mask or that are in a, they're in a position where they want, need to feel as protected as possible. That we have more of an industrial type mask, the K95 mask that can be used as well. We have a stock of those as well. We have our thermometers, and this was all from the state. And they actually did a really nice job in fulfilling all of the requests that we had. So we will have all of that information that we'll send to parents and to our staff. But we're ready with our PPE and we feel like we're fully stocked for as long as we need to be. Physical distancing, as you can see here, these are some of the areas where we're going to have signage everywhere in areas that fortunately, you know, our students and some of our families that have been out and about have, you know, whether you're at a bank or grocery store or somewhere, you're starting to see these markings. So this should be very familiar to our students and our staff. Right now, the, the, the county has a cohort definition of having 12 in a cohort. And so that is likely to change. Right now, the state's definition of a cohort is 16. And the county, which, the county is always allowed to be more restrictive. They can't be less restrictive than the state, but they can be more than restrictive than the state, is at, they're, the county is at 12 and the state is at 16. So we think that as the numbers continue to fall, that LA County will change that definition of that cohort from 12 to 16, and that seems to be what's happening in other areas of the state. Monitoring is going to be a big part of what we do. All staff will be responsible to ensure that everybody is masked up and staying six feet apart. And we're going to do what we can with our schedules at our schools to provide as much staggering if possible, some of our schedules and, and some of the shifts that we have for some of our employees when possible and if feasible so that we can get students in to our schools in a timely and safe manner. Because students will be going through their symptom check as well. And that's going to be done before students come on campus. So we're looking at potentially doing checks of temperatures with students that are still in their car. And that seems to be working well with most of the, the people that are doing this in the country. We continue to examine that to see if that's going to work for us. And it depends on the school and the time, and we're going to have to get really creative. Another area as far as being creative is utilizing as much outside space as we can. So the alternative space for some of our staff members that are working in a smaller space or a space where they feel like they could get, you know, they'd be more comfortable. We're going to be looking at utilizing as much outside space as we can for our classes. And again, we'll just get really creative on, on how we do that and where we do that. And that seems to be working in many of the schools across the country as they continue to be creative and try to keep people out in the most ventilated areas as possible. The infection control, this is a responsibility that we have through the exposure management plan that we have, that we've developed. The student screenings I talked about, the positive entry that, that students may have, whether, you know, they cannot answer the questions, if there are more than two symptoms. That's handled differently and students will be immediately placed in an area where they would need to return home. If they are still in the car and they have a temperature, that's caught early. But it could be something that happens even during the day where somebody's not feeling well. And so we have a plan in place so that, that those students can be, and staff members have a place where they can go to have a test if they prefer to have a test or to begin a quarantine or to just transfer home. The ventilation piece I know is a big piece when it comes to ensuring the infection control. We have upgraded all of our filters. We have, we're making sure that all of our air conditioning units are running appropriately. I know that after talking to Ken who's here today, Ken Haas, I mean, they've been in and actually cleaned. I mean, they've been in and actually cleaning the machinery and cleaning, you know, these systems to ensure that from the inside out that they are running as efficiently as they possibly can. The cleaning products, this is something that I know that I probably have a thousand emails in my inbox right now from vendors. And it's all about, you know, COVID friendly disinfectants and sanitizers and they're slapping stickers on everything left and right. And so we're not falling for that. We're really spending some time to make sure that we buy the right products. And not only that, that we are providing the type of training that it takes to use these products. Because this is a disinfectant for killing germs and COVID nineteen. And so it's not like just taking something out of, you know, a cabinet and using like you would at home. So these are strong materials and so they're safe for kids. And so there is a training for anybody that's going to be using these materials. And very proud that that's already started and that Ken has that that underway. Some of the communication. This is the beginning, this this kickoff, my report tonight is the beginning of some communication because I know that people are asking, you know, what are you doing to ensure that you're ready? It's the biggest question that I get about, you know, what 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 are you doing to ensure the facilities are ready? That students and staff will be safe. And the best, the the best experience has been kind of the test has been people, some people, some staff starting to come into our schools. And so, as I mentioned before, we've been able to kind of test some of our protocols and procedures. And and we're able to then fix them and improve them when we see that it's needed. So it's actually been really beneficial to us to start having some staff members come back and be in classrooms because we're able to then put our our protocols to the test, so to speak. So we're going to be putting out some information later this week and 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 partial next week. So that parents can be reassured that that we do have a very safe environment. And it's one that we're working very closely with the county. We've invited the county to even come in and to, you know, kind of go through our protocol with us. Because our job and our responsibility is to make sure that we can uphold every piece of the public health order that is required. And and so there are areas, as I've mentioned before, that we're going to exceed and then others where we're meeting right on and we have invited the county to be partners with us and to, you know, have a critical eye on some of our policies and procedures. So the communication will be going out to families as well about the the facilities, what we're doing, how we're cleaning. And then also how we're going to prepare for students when they come back and what that actually looks like. And it's going to be a little bit different by site because you can imagine the footprint of all of our sites is a little bit different. Certainly, expectations need to be shared. Those are things in the public health order that require us to share with parents and staff. And we will be doing that. And probably the biggest thing that people are wanting to know is the changes that are happening in the academic and extra extracurricular programming. And this is the area that, you know, we've been we've been ready, but we 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 just feel like there's some information that we don't have the information for as far as the when cohorts are going to be coming back and what kind of programming there will be. And we don't want to misstep here. So we are patiently waiting. We're waiting through the tiered system and we're waiting and working cooperatively with the county to then notify parents when we can start bringing people back into our schools. So the last area of the public health order is access to critical services. And that's actually what we're spending a lot of our time on right now. And that's looking at our IPs and our five oh fours. And there's a huge responsibility behind inviting people back into our schools, our students and staff. And so we are still working to ensure that we can do that in a way that we can meet every piece on the public health order, including some of the testing areas that I just talked about, just in case something happens. We want to make sure that before we give the green light, that, you know, everything is has been approved and that it's been that we can comply with every piece of that health order. And we're right there. As I mentioned before, so this is an area like this is interesting. So if you look at the map on the left and we were looking at, you know, being seven or below to begin that fourteen day countdown. Well, if you look at the 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 new COVID nineteen cases for the county are at seven point seven, but they do use an adjusted case rate. And they do this because of the conversion that we had before from the LA County site. So with that conversion, that adjusted case rate puts us at seven. So, you know, at first, you know, I my first thought was, okay, wow, this is, you know, this is going to be day one of a fourteen day. Can we stay seven or below? And we're going to watch it. We watch it every day. Ms. Starkins and I actually several times a day we check it. And and so I'm a little worried, to be quite honest, and I don't want to be pessimistic in any way. But but when they're telling us that some of the data may change because of the holiday and people being out and about, I am a little bit worried because if we're at seven now and we go above, then we start all over again with the, you know, waiting to get to seven and below. So I don't want to get too excited, but it's, you know, we're making really good progress here. And it feels good that, you know, numbers are coming down and that we are very confident about feeling like we can provide a safe environment for our students and our staff. So as you know, the county's new direction, this phased in approach, we're watching very closely. You know, assessing the programs, we're assessing IPs, we're looking at the modifications, we're looking at the accommodations that are necessary. And our biggest area right now of need is is students that need to have that assessment for their triennials and just IPs. So that's an area that we are spending a lot of time on right now because that is probably our most critical area of need right now is is assuring that those kids, you know, and and parents are through that process where they are assessed and, you know, IPs are updated. So some of the things that people will see, you know, if you are in in our schools and your staff member is Plexiglas, you know, we were ahead of the curve there. There are school districts that are so far behind that this is ordered and will not be in for weeks. But Ken and his team and Wade and Rebecca and our principals, like we we really are ahead of the game here. There are a couple of areas that we've identified, working with some staff members that that need this that will be coming in in the next couple of weeks. But we feel very good about where, you know, where where our responsibility is protecting people that are in areas that are going to have people that are coming up to them. So lots of unknowns at this point. You know, the county is still reacting to some of the changes. Orange County is is reacting in a variety of ways, too. I encourage people to, you know, look to see what's happening out there in other school districts. We are all in this together. We're all trying to figure this out. We all want people to come back quickly, safely, but in a way that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we come back too quick. And then we have to, for whatever reason, there's a cluster of cases which can happen so quickly. And then we have to shut down our operations again. And I think that would be more devastating to our students than to do this in a in a very intelligent and purposeful way, which I think we are well on our way to doing. And I know that it's very difficult for our parents. I mean, I talk to parents every day and I just want to thank our parents for, you know, their support, their patience, their flexibility. And as I mentioned before I started, our teachers are knocking it out of the park. What they're doing with the technology that's provided in such a short amount of time, I could not be any more proud of what they're doing and how they're handling it. And even watching our students from five years old to high school really adapting. And and the only thing that I can say to that is, is I conclude is it's not forever. This is not going to be the new, this is not the new normal. And so the so, you know, asking people to continue to be flexible, come along with us. You know, we're doing the very, very best that we can under the constraints that we have. And it's very complex and we're trying to break this down so that we can share this information with you. We want you to feel safe. We want you to see the the hard work that's been happening in our schools. And I'm very, very confident about the work that we've done. And we look forward to showing that and sharing that with you in the next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy. Any questions from the board or comments? Mr. Spitz.
Well, I just, I just want to say that I I'm struck by the huge, huge volume of work that this pandemic requires of our staff. And all of that is unrelated and additional to their full time jobs of delivering the educational program that's going on. It it it's just quite amazing what they're able to accomplish and what they're, how how they're able to do it. And it's, of course, reassuring to know that all conceivable steps are being taken to return to the schools when it's allowed. So thank you, Dr. Bregy, and thank you, your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mrs. Walker Schuman and Mrs. Marcus.
So just thank you for the update. Thank you for the report. Some of these things we've, you know, we've seen and heard before, but I feel like the list keeps getting longer of what steps have been taken to ensure a good return. And I hope that everyone listening has the confidence that all of the different components of the guidelines and requirements to make sure return is safe and planned for have been considered and and thought about and addressed. So I just, I thank you for that. I think it's a great confidence builder. And I wanted to echo sentiments of Mr. Spitz. I think our teachers are doing such a stellar job. You know, if if ever there was a time we could say to the community, we heard your comments, we heard your concerns from, you know, the experience from the last quarter of last year and were able to take those into consideration. And the teachers have so stepped up and shown up for these kids and for these families. I just cannot begin to say enough. So thank you to all of them and to the cabinet and staff and faculty that have been working unbelievably hard to try and make this all make sense and and communicate it out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus.
I want to thank Dr. Bregy for that very, very comprehensive report. I thought it was fantastic. And what amazed me is that the more we do, the more we find that we have to do and how we are so willing to do it. In other words, we do one thing and we find we still have more to do. And by being prepared the way we are getting prepared, I think we are learning that we will be, as you said, well ahead of the game. I think we are going to be really on top of the game because it really does show what all this thinking has come to. And I want to compliment everybody that's working so very hard. And I look forward and I I have some compliment comments for the teachers through my board comment. So I just want to thank you again for that great report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
I just want to repeat what everyone else has said. I won't repeat it, but I'll just say that I agree. And I think the teachers and the staff, everyone before us, just really working hard on behalf of our district. And it's so much more complicated, as Mr. Spitz has said, to conduct business in this fashion with COVID nineteen upon us. And I think that we are doing a tremendous amount of work. And I hope that, you know, at someday we'll be able to to return to normalcy. But that, you know, that's not happening today. It's happening hopefully in the near future. But I commend you all for all of the work that you're doing on our behalf. So thank you. Mr. Kashanian, did you have something you wanted to add? I think I saw a little wave there, perhaps. Great, thank you. So we're actually going to move right into you and it's, thank you, Dr. Bregy, for that report.
Thank you.
Mr. Kashanian, you're on, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. First off, students are expressing their support for admin and the board. They believe that giving the opportunity for office hours on Fridays before school will give them some time to ask questions to their teachers. Students also believe that class time has been running smoother than ever. As with any new feat, it takes time to perfect. And I believe that at this point, teachers are doing great regarding the structure of all classes. On the other, there are minor issues, which there may not be much we could do about since I've already brought them up, the rest of administration has already raised these issues. The first being the lack of student teacher contact, which I'm hoping will be solved with these new office hours. And the second being too much screen time, which results in experiencing eye strain, back pain and disrupted sleep from the excess of blue light. Some some advice that I have for students who I have not told this to already is please try to figure out if your laptops have a night mode because that has personally helped me with the blue light issue. Also, try to stay away from your phones twenty to thirty minutes before bed in order to help you get a more restful sleep. Lastly, if you're experiencing eye strains, please try the every twenty, every twenty method that Mrs. Walker Schuman brought up in the last meeting. Pretty much every twenty minutes, try to keep your focus on a faraway object for twenty seconds. I have tried it and it has made a difference. Lastly, I would like to assure that ASB's optimizing academic committee committee is working side by side with the administration to come up with the best possible solutions in the interest of students and parents. That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kashanian, for your report. Okay, we're moving on.
I'll make a motion.
Just I think I have to read. You can just give me a quick second. I think I have to read something before I read it. So read this before we actually make a motion, Mr. Marcus, if you just bear with me. Public hearing and approval of resolution twenty twenty sufficiency of instructional materials. The public hearing on sufficiency of instructional materials is now open at, and I don't have a time on me. See here, at six eleven PM on September twenty second. The governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District in compliance with the educational code section six zero one one nine is required to hold a public hearing on or before the eighth week of school to certify that each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each subject area that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the State Board of Education. No public comment was received regarding this proposed resolution. The public hearing is now closed at six eleven PM September twenty second. May I now have a motion, Mr. Marco?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty one dash zero one three, statement of assurance of fiscal year twenty 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 one pupil textbook and instructional materials program.
I will make, I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Marco. Are those in favor or any? Aye, thank you. Thank you, five zero. Okay, I have to read something else before we get a motion for the second piece of this. For item twelve B, public hearing on learning continuity and attendance plan. The public hearing on the learning continuity and attendance plan is now open at six twelve PM. Senate Bill ninety eight, section four three five oh nine, established the learning continuity and attendance plan, the learning continuity plan, which is intended to balance the needs of all stakeholders, including educators, parents, students and community members. While streamlining meaningful stakeholder engagement and considering several preexisting plans, it combines the intent behind executive order N fifty six dash twenty, which extended the timeline for twenty twenty one local control and accountability plan, LCAP, and require a written report to the community on the ongoing need for LEAs to formally plan for the twenty 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 one school year amid the uncertainty caused by COVID nineteen pandemic. The learning continuity and attendance plan replaces the LCAP for the twenty twenty one school year. No public comment was received regarding the BHUSD learning continuity and attendance plan. Therefore, the public hearing is now closed at six thirteen PM on September twenty second. I will make a motion to approve the public hearing approval for twenty twenty continuing attendance plan.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I made the wrong motion, Mrs. Walker Schuman. I'm going to correct that. Did I make it? Yes, no, we have it right. It's right, it's right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item.
I'll make a motion for, oh, it's an informational item only, for the appendix to the dual enrollment partnership agreement with Santa Monica College for college and career access pathways, CCAP for twenty twenty one. with Santa Monica College for College and Career Access Pathways, CCAP, for 2021.
Thank you, and I believe I asked for this because, you know, during this COVID period of time, a lot of parents are looking for other areas outside of our district for students to engage. And so, we had this coming up anyways. So, thank you, Dustin, for being here with us tonight to explain what opportunities and how this works.
Absolutely. Every year, we have to be able to publicly announce that we do have a partnership, not only with our West LA College, which is our direct attendance area for our community-based college. We also have the opportunity, West LA, through meetings, will also grant us opportunities to extend our curriculum into Santa Monica College as well, which is not our current attendance boundaries community college. And so, through this partnership in information only, it allows us to be able to create dual enrollment courses taught at Beverly Hills High School by our Beverly Hills High School teachers and provide early college credit to our students that are enrolled in those programs. This year, we were approved again for our Broadcast Journalism Program. We are approved for our Photography Program, our Business Program, and in addition, our Fashion Program. So, this is the first year that we are able to get the approval process for the dual enrollment for a fashion program. Outside of the SMC partnership, we are continually working with West LA College. If you recall, we are offering our concurrent enrollment courses after school at Beverly Hills High School to offer additional early college credit to our students free of charge. But we're also in talks with West LA College of creating dual enrollment courses with them in addition to the SMC courses in areas or pathways such as architecture as well. So, we're continually trying to find different ways to be able to provide free of charge, early college credits to our students to be able to obviously help with their post-secondary missions, but also make us very competitive compared to our surrounding districts. And so, that's kind of the information that I just wanted to be able to provide. It just allow you guys to know that that agreement is back in for another school year. And so, all of our students that are enrolled in those courses will receive the opportunity this week after tonight to be able to start enrolling in those dual enrollment courses. Outside of also just adding a little more information, West LA is always looking for and offering opportunities for students to be able to take concurrently enrolled college courses. So, if there are any students out there of the high school age that are looking for anything, maybe possibly in the evening, also during the summer months, we do have in free of charge to our high school students those West LA courses that students can enroll in to get those early college credits. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for Mr. Seaman? Mrs. Marcus.
For that, Mr. Seaman, all the classes that these kids are going to be enrolling in will be online, right? Is that correct? And they will be taught by our teachers, by the Beverly Hills High School teachers?
Correct. In the dual enrollment program, it's actually taught during the day by our teachers. Our teachers are approved by Santa Monica College and West LA College to meet the requirements to be adjunct faculty. So, when Mr. Briggs is teaching his photos, his Advanced Photos coursework, our students are in the course already at Beverly, so they get credit towards our graduation, but they also get a transcribed credit by SMC. So, it's almost like the students get to double dip in very few courses, and this is one of them. So, in the Photos course, Broadcast Journalism, so our Broadcast Journalism students, working with Mr. Carey, get that opportunity for early dual enrollment. Concurrent enrollment, however, means outside of the school day, and those courses will be virtual outside of the school day, either after school or possibly even on the weekends.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman, and again, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. It's a wonderful program, or programs, and there's opportunity here to take advantage of these programs. And so, it's such, it's such a great opportunity for our students. I'm glad we have these opportunities available. Thank you, Dustin, again. Any further questions before we move on? Oh, Mr. Spitz.
I just want to say that this is just, this is just another of the special advantages and opportunities that we have for our students. And I, and I, and I would, I would really like to see announcements made to the community in general so that, so that the community can appreciate all the advantages that we have in our district for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Okay, we're going to move on to planning facilities.
We have to vote, don't we?
Oh, I'm, no, it's just a, do we have to vote?
No, it's informational only.
Okay.
Okay, great, so I'll make a motion. We're going to move on to planning and facilities to ratify amendment number one.
This is in finance.
I'm sorry, I scratched that out. I'm sorry, Mr. Roach, are you here? You are here. Okay, do you have, did you want to give us an update? Or did you want to start off by giving us some information before we vote on this?
Most certainly, members of the board. This is a revised resolution. You saw the initial resolution in the summertime, asking to borrow up to $5 million from the LA County Schools Pool. In discussions with LA County, we came to realize that the $5 million was an arbitrary limit that we can actually borrow up to 85% of our cash needs. So, with this resolution, we can borrow from the county pool and not have to issue a trans this year, which will save us between $45,000 and $55,000. So, this will give us that flexibility and save the district some money.
Thank you, Mr. Roach, for that update. We'll go around if there's any questions to the board members.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2020, 2021-014, Temporary Transfer from the School Pool's Fund for the 2021 Fiscal Year Revised.
I'll second that. Any questions for Mr. Roach before we move on? No? Okay, great, all those in favor? If that passes, 5-0, thank you. Okay, now, I'm going to make my motion to ratif, for the approval of ratification amendment number one to the Agreement for Material Testing and Inspection Services with RMA, Group for Beverly Hills High School Buildings B3-B4 Project. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Any questions, discussion? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on.
I'd like to make a ratification of a motion to ratify an agreement with the Pro West PCM Incorporated, Doing Business with Pro West Constructors, to demolish Beverly Hills High School Building H.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion, questions before we move on? Do you want to, Mr., I do have a question just for point of clarification. I see Mr., was he with us? Or did he disappear from my screen?
I'm here.
Yes, there you are, there you are, you're hiding in the bushes. Could you just tell us, please, what Building H is so that folks watching understand what that means?
Building H was essentially housing the maintenance and operations spaces. It was orig, it is, was originally, it is planned to be demolished in the master plan, the future master plan program. For the mitigation of the oil wells, for in particular, 107, it was expedient to demolish it in order to make a space to provide an intercept for 107 in lieu of putting an oil rig next to Building B1. So, this was put under the emergency resolution that Terry had put together previous, previous resolution. And so, Pro West was directed to provide a price. And that's, we were able to knock it down in about two weeks and advance the schedule for laydown area for the oil well operation for 107.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, for that explanation. Any further questions or concerns or comments? Thank you for explaining that and clarifying. Mrs. Marcus.
I had asked that question earlier, and that was exactly the response that I had gotten. That's why I did not ask the question again. But I appreciate the quick response I got from Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's 5-0, thank you. Moving on.
Approval to Acceptance is Complete at Rodeo School Portable's Rack Installation and Writing Board Removal, Performed by Edgar Garza Construction and Authorization to File a Notice of Completion and Release Retention.
So, moved. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's 5-0. Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve agreement with WZI Incorporated for site... Did I miss one again?
14D.
14D. The one before.
14D, I think she just did that one.
No, I did.
No, 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 she's right. Okay, except I'll make a motion to, I scratched that one off too soon, Acceptance as Complete Low Voltage and Electrical Insulation at Rodeo for the Relocation of the Maintenance and Operations Department Workspace Performed by Vector Resources Incorporated, Doing Business as Vector USA, and Authorization to File a Notice of Completion and Release Retention.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, that's 5-0. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with WZI Incorporated for site restoration and plugging abandonment of legacy wells located at Beverly Hills High School. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that's 5-0, thank you. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve, for the approval of a resolution number 2020-2021-015 to oppose the approval of the AB 331 California in its current form, Pupil Instruction, High School Graduation Requirements, Ethnic Studies.
Okay. I will second that, and I think this deserves a little bit of, of an explanation here, what we're trying to do here, because I did see some of the public comments. So, we are not rejecting any requirement that might be coming down from the state of California. They are in process right now, as I, as we mentioned two weeks ago, of receiving comments from districts, from individuals across the state through the, because they were having public comment. And that public comment concludes on September 30th. And we have, the purpose of this resolution, as we discussed at the last board meeting, is basically to just make sure that we are notifying our agreement with the disagreements on the, on the curriculum that were initially being considered. And since then, as I should say, as we discussed again two weeks ago, the state is looking at re adopting new curriculum that does not, should not have a flair of anti-Semitism in, in the lesson plans that are being proposed. So, so we're not, again, opposing any curriculum that might be coming down the pipeline to the state of California in the future. We're not saying we would oppose to having an ethnic studies class if that was a requirement for graduation, because again, the Department of Education can make those demands or requirements, and we would have to follow suit. And this is more or less to make sure that we voice our, our opposition to the, to the curriculum that was passed initially during the first round. Dr. Bregge, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you stressed the main part, and that is that it's not opposing the, you know, the actual bill and the actual requirement, but it's just providing the opportunity for, you know, local school districts to kind of weigh in on that curriculum. So, I think you explained that well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
A whole bunch.
I'll start, thank you. So, I've read the bill over and over again, and there is clear language in the bill that states that the curriculum shall not reflect or promote directly or indirectly any bias, bigotry, or discrimination against any person or group of persons on the basis of any category protected by Section 220, and it shall also not teach or promote religious doctrine. The problem here is, and while I'll be supporting this tonight, is that this really should be addressed to the curriculum, which is in, it's not complete. And for the state to put forth a mandate in a bill without having a curriculum attached is, is not, it's not the correct order, how it should have been done. School districts should have been able to completely vet out and view the curriculum, which, by the way, I've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin or Dr. Bregge, but the curriculum is not due to be finalized till March of next year. Correct. So, it still gives a lot of time for things to come in and out of that curriculum without supervision of, of school districts and school district officials. So, as much as I appreciate the intent, and I support ethnic studies, and I support also the, the rejecting of the anti-Semitism components in it, it's just not complete. And, and we can't, we can't support that and throw our weight behind something that's not completed yet. So, I look forward to it being robust, complete, and a good guide for school districts to properly introduce this topic into, into the curriculum in a way that does not offend anybody, does not promote anything it should not be promoting, so...
So, Mr. Marco, I just want to, I just, I should bring you guys all to speed, everyone here. I, I actually did, I, I said to you all two weeks ago that I reached out to Senator Ben Allen, and we, we actually did connect last week. I want to say it was Tuesday, I think I was traveling when he called. And he did stress that, you are absolutely right, that the curriculum is not set in stone. However, they did look at some of the issues that did raise some concern, because initially, there was some areas that did raise the issue of an anti-Semitic flair. And they have provided safeguards to deal with those concerns that were initially raised. He also did say that while this will be a mandate, if it passes from, coming from the state, and, you know, all districts will be required to implement, there still will be local control for, for districts to look at the curriculum. So, you know, he, he spoke about how staff, faculty would, would look at the curriculum and really make those adjustments. There would be flexibility to adopt certain areas of the, of, you know, of the curriculum. So, they're kind of thinking there would be an umbrella of areas and topics, and then, obviously, faculty could decide how they will integrate that umbrella of topics of curriculum into every district. And so, there is local control, there is some flexibility, although we would have to implement if, if this should be, if this should pass at the state level. So, so I appreciate your comments, but I did want to share that with the board, and I thought that was really an important piece of information to share with all of you.
Thank you. And I think, I think the work of Mr. Allen and the, so I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse him with Kevin. Senator, Senator Ben Allen and the Jewish Caucus is vital. But as it was pointed out to me, I spoke to somebody in the Office of Special Envoy to Combat and Monitor Anti-Semitism, and it was pointed out to me that this, this curriculum, although there are safeguards in now, there's nothing particularly to stop them from being pulled out until this thing is finalized. So, we have to be watchdogs of this curriculum until it is finalized.
And that's why it's important to put this resolution. And he said there might be other opportunities for more public comment down the road. So, we'll have to continue to watch this, absolutely. Okay, any other further questions, Mrs. Walker Schuman? I think you had a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, actually. I do, I want to go back to what this is called and what it asks us to do. It asks us to oppose the approval of AB 331, which is the requirement for graduation for an ethnic studies class. So, I just want to be clear about that. That is not the curriculum that we're opposing. It's actually the requirement of establishing graduation requirement for, for the class of 2029. Just to be clear, and I don't disagree with the contents of the resolution, but I will point out that in our conversation two weeks ago, Mr. Spitz actually said we should include all discrimination, and there's nothing at all in this resolution that addresses anything other than anti-Semitism. So, I feel like this is a good start, but I don't really feel like this is the, this should be the final product. I feel like this is the light version. I feel like this is a good start, but I don't really feel like this is the, this should be the final product. I feel like this is the light version. I think we, it's really important for our community that we should get feedback, not just on this, but on some of the other things, as we've seen in some of the communication and letters that we've had today. There's a, there's a lot of strong support for ethnic studies. And I do want to go back to some of the comments from last week. And just be really clear about what this resolution does. It may make people feel better, but it doesn't change the outcome, because this has already passed the legislature. And if the governor signs this bill, it becomes law. So this resolution, while we can go on record, does not change this bill becoming law. I totally agree that this is cart before the horse. I think the curriculum should have been developed and finalized before this bill was brought and was and was even presented as a requirement for graduation. And for that reason, I don't support the way that this has been done. But let's just be clear, the only real way to remedy anti-Semitic content in being in or considered the curriculum is to advocate against it through the CDE, is to make comments, is to support the Jewish groups that are advocating against inclusion of anti-Semitic content, and reach out to the governor's office. The only other remedy we have as a school district is, as I said two weeks ago, developing our own curriculum, making sure that we have the control to what we're exposing our students to. So I'm still going to stand by that. I think that's the right path. I think everyone should not be complacent and uncomfortable just because a resolution like this is presented or passes. This doesn't mean the work ends, it means it actually begins. We need to continue with advocacy against this particular content. I do want to go back, though, to a couple of weeks ago when we had this discussion. We talked about including anti-discrimination. We talked about including anti-bias, anti-racism, and there's no mention at all of that in this, or of diversity and inclusion, which is a significant value that our district is, that should require equal attention and is in our strategic plan. I think civil society demands that we learn about and critically analyze different points of view. The history books don't even begin to do justice to the suffering of the Jews. So we can't hold that American history books are the be-all, end-all, and not flawed. We constantly will have to be vigilant about the content that is delivered for our kids. And I think this ought to be a community effort. As I said, I think we should be asking our families to submit the parts that they also think are integral to a resolution like this. After Mr. Spitz's comments in our conversation two weeks ago, I put together a resolution supporting anti-bias in the Beverly Hills Unified School District. I drew it from three different schools, two different states. And it addresses the entire umbrella of discrimination and racism and bias, including anti-Semitism. And I feel like this actually would be a real, a really nice compliment to this resolution that's before us today, as it actually deals with many more of the issues that exist in our district.
So, Mrs. Walker Schuman, can I just say that I think we did get that mailed. All of us received that in the mail from Dr. Breggy. But when we were setting the agenda, Dr. Breggy, did you want to jump in as far as, if you recall, last week, we I'm not disagreeing with what your, that you, we did receive your draft form of your resolution. This resolution, I think, came to us through, did you ask Jabari for this, Dr. Breggy? This resolution?
Yes. AB three three one, but
Yeah.
The resolution that Tristan is speaking about, I was under the impression that that was much more global, because it was, you know, it was anti-bias. And so it was, that's where I wanted more of the board to to weigh in. The AB three three one was more specific, so, and it was really timely, because this bill is on the governor's desk, and he has until, you know, till next week.
Right.
But what you wrote was, which I said to the entire board, I thought was a great first kind of stab at like a bigger, more global, more like the strategic plan. More, more like a, this is, you know, when you were talking about like advocating and not just putting something into writing, that's where the strategic plan, because it's more, you know, so each school, each, like, it becomes part of our fabric as a school district.
Yeah. Yeah. So one doesn't supers, I think they're two different resolutions, but for the purposes of timing and getting something into the record, we, you know, this is why this resolution is before us. It doesn't mean that we can't adopt another resolution. I think we, it was just trying to be strategic on timing, because that resolution only got out to us, I think, maybe Monday, I can't remember. But it was, it was definitely not around Friday when we were drafting the agenda. So I hope that that makes sense, and that clarifies it.
It does. I have a couple more things that I'd like to say. I think this also needs to be a priority while we're not waiting for a bill to be signed on the governor's desk. We have a culture problem in Beverly Hills Unified. There is a culture, there is a culture of lacking in kindness here. We have students starting Instagram pages asking for gossip and rumor, telling people to spill the tea. We've got horrifying email that was sent six weeks ago, signed from Hawthorne Jewish mommies that orders a family to leave the district because, quote, "We run this town" and also contains the N-word, among other colorful expletives. Yet this monumental problem has been completely unaddressed for six weeks in favor of a resolution for a bill that doesn't actually go into effect until twenty twenty nine. So I have an issue with this, and I'll, I'll finish with this. I was listening to my daughter talk to her friend of hers, who's no longer actually in Beverly Hills Unified. She attends New Roads, which is the school my son graduated from. And in their conversation, they were talking about these Instagrams that kids have started trying to get people to give gossip and rumor. And this girlfriend of my daughter said, "That's so weird," because at my school, we have an Instagram where students post anonymous compliments for each other and for staff. We have a lot of work to do here, and I really hope that the biased discrimination, racism, and diversity and inclusion component does not get swept under the rug. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, I'm talking about the, the resolution that Tristan just spoke about. I find that to be like a floor plan for a curriculum that we, as our own school district, can write to incorporate everything that's there. So it's not something that isn't used, isn't considered. And I think it becomes a great, as I say, a great strategic plan to outline and to prepare and to incorporate for any curriculum or adaption or change or amendment to the curriculum that may come out of the state where we can endorse it or incorporate it for our own use in the district. And I think that's something that we need to consider. I'm not too sure about the other discussion that was taking place. I'm not part of that. And and as I say, I, I, I'm, I agree that the cart is before the horse. We don't have a curriculum, and yet they want us to vote on, on it. So I do agree with that. And I would like to just make that comment.
Yeah, so we're, just to clarify, we're not voting on anything. Mrs. Marcus, we're simply just adopting resolutions. So I think you understood, I think you said we're voting on something. We're not a vote, no one's being asked to vote on anything. The state still is deciding, you know, what they're going to adopt and what form, and I think we're all in agreement here that it's unfortunate that the state did not provide the curriculum before this initiative came to be. But it is what it is, and I think it's important for Beverly Hills to take, you know, some type of action and to put into the record where we stand with the curriculum that was initially proposed. And I do, you know, we're going to have to be watchdogs and and see how this continues to develop in the near future and continue to be part of the process in being proactive. And so I just wanted to clarify that for you, Mrs. Marcus. Mr. Spitz, did you have a question? I saw your hand. No.
Not really. I agree with the comments that you've made, Mrs. Hacker. I, I'm always, I'm always sensitive about adding graduation requirements. And the reason is our, our, our students, our high school students are really, really, carry a heavy load for graduation. And I always hope that if, if something like this comes along and needs to be taught, that it can be sort of added into the history or social studies course, rather than coming up with additional courses that just burden our students unreasonably.
Yes, I appreciate that. I show the same question to Senator Allen. I asked him, you know, if there would be any flexibility where we could incorporate some of the curriculum into like history or other classes that we already have in place. And and he said, "It doesn't appear that that's where, what the state is, has in mind for all the districts." So, you know, it does look like if they pass this, that it definitely will be an additional set of units, an additional class for our students, similar to what happened with health. And I expressed my concern to him about how our students are overloaded, especially students who are juniors and seniors. You know, they do so much outside of the classroom in preparing for their college applications, and I know they're heavily burdened already with time. But again, this is coming from the state, but I do appreciate that comment, Mr. Minister Spitz, Mr. Marcus.
I just, Mel, thank you for bringing that up. It's an excellent point. I had made that in my notes, too, and I talked to people about the same thing. It's, curriculums are overhauled all the time, and there was an easy way for them to just look at the curriculum either in social studies, which is really what this falls under, because it's social studies, and revamp it in a way to address these concerns, and certainly build it into an existing curriculum, even scattered over the course of seven, four to seven years between middle school and high school. They could have hit all the salient points that they're trying to get home. But I agree about making it a graduation requirement. And I didn't note that earlier, and I'm glad you said something. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that robust discussion, for your comments. At this moment, I think I'm going to call for the question. So, all those, Yoni, I'm sorry, I skipped you again. Did you have, did you want to add anything or say anything before we vote?
No worries. No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. And Mrs. Marcus, okay, there you are. Thank you, that's five zero. Thank you, Dr. Breggy, for putting this together for us so quickly and for working with Jabari to get the language to us. I appreciate that so much. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to now move on to discussion. Resolution Board Bylaw ninety ten and Board Governance Handbook pages twenty and twenty one. So I just want to, look, I just want to keep the conversation very specific and very focused. So I don't want this to become a, you know, the whole purpose for this is just to discuss what Board Policy ninety ten is. And just to go over it with all of you, because we've all agreed, agreed to it in our handbook, we we understand it, and I know that for the most part, we always uphold it. So I'm just going to read a section, which I think really sets the tone for the discussion. When speaking to the community groups, the media or other members of the public, individual ward members should recognize that their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board. Ward members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such and not as a viewpoint of the board. All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representatives. So that's Board Policy ninety ten, and I just want to remind everyone on the board that when we are appointed to liaisons or committees, that we are representing the board, and that we should really, if we have an opinion, and everybody has an opinion about everything, and I welcome opinions, no one is trying to take that away from you. You need to really separate yourselves from what the board, you know, the purpose of your, of your representation of the board and, you know, versus personal. Otherwise, it, you know, we're not upholding this policy, which really governs the board. And so, Mrs. Walker Schuman, I don't really want to get into the details of what was said, and that really doesn't matter. I just want to remind you that when you go to the Human Relations Commission, you're there on official business. If you wish to take an opportunity to express your opinion, you should really then take a card. I think they have public comment period, just as we do here in the district. And at that time, I think it'd be appropriate for you to do that and express your own views personally, and separating those from your business on an official capacity as the board. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that, and that just isn't applied to Mrs. Walker Schuman, it applies to all of us. And along those lines, I also wanted to just thank Mrs. Walker Schuman and Mrs. Marcus for representing us at these commissions. I know that they take a lot of time, and it's one added thing that we have to do. So I really thank you for representing us. And that's, that's basically it. Any further comments?
Yeah, communication from board members?
I'm still on this issue. So, okay, Mr. Marcus. Anybody else? And again, I want to, I don't want to use this platform to discuss campaigns or candidates. It would not be the right place to do, and I will not lend this opportunity for that to occur. So please, unless it's about ninety ten, we, I do want to move on to communication from board members. Otherwise, I will call anyone who tries to entertain any other topics not related to ninety ten out of order.
Thank you, Mrs. Hacker, for bringing this to my attention. In most professional organizations, this would have sufficiently been addressed in an email or phone call, but since your signature move is ambushed by board meeting, allow me to clear up any confusion. My elementary school teacher, Mrs. Brooks, taught me the proper use of pronouns. As you know, I believe words matter. So when I use the pronoun "we," that refers to a group of people. In a public arena, it's usually in reference to the district or the board. However, when I use the pronoun "I," that indicates I am speaking individually, as in, "I find your efforts undignified." Naturally, when speaking to the Human Relations Commission, I give updates on what is happening in the district. We are beginning Multicultural Week. We are honoring the California thespian officers from Beverly Vista Middle School. And when I have comments, I use the pronoun "I." I have been giving updates for two years. I will never, ever be okay with anyone making.
Yes, Mrs. Walker Schuman, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you right there. You were there on official business.
There was no.
You said.
Comments?
No, I think there was, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. You're out of order. You are out of order.
There was no ambiguity. I update to the commission that the information was presented from we as a district.
So again, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I am not.
I'm not, well, I.
Mr. Spitz endorsed a candidate and wrote a letter.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
And put it in the local newspaper. He used his title as board member. When you endorsed a candidate, you're listed with your title as board member. When Mrs. Marcus endorsed candidates, she's used her title as board member, and on none of those occasions were the rest of the board asked if they support that endorsement. So we each have the right to speak individually as board members without representing the sentiments of the whole board. It's actually in Bylaw ninety ten that all public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president. The inverse of that means that any statements not made by the board president are not authorized board statements. So thank you for pointing it out. I actually think this is pretty clear hypocrisy. But I will note.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman, for calling me names. I didn't call you any, but thank you for that. It's duly noted in the record. I appreciate that. And this is, this is, this is very unfair. When you go and you represent the Board of Education, and you are giving your report, and you don't separate the lines of your report versus your personal comments or opinions, many in the community would think that you are out of, out of step with the rules of our, of our board. I think that you know better than that, and I was simply trying to call it out for everyone to remind them. If people.
I said, what you would have heard is that I said, "I have comments to make."
Okay, there's a public, there is a public comment period. There is a public comment period that takes place in every official capacity for commissions and for school board meetings and for city council. That would have been the appropriate time to. That would have been the appropriate time to use the pronoun "I." Okay, so we are going to move on. Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any other further comments from anyone? Mrs. Marcus, you're, you're on mute.
I asked if we're doing board comments now.
Yes, we are moving on to board comments now. Thank you. Mr. Marcus, you had a board comment.
I do, but I want to defer to Yoni first.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to say that tomorrow is back to school night. Students and parents be on the lookout for an email from admin that will have steps for parents on how to get into their students' classes, and we'll also have the specialized schedule for Wednesday, which is shortened. Also, this Thursday is ASB's first milk and cookies event at 5:00 PM. If anyone is interested in baking or decorating cookies for a chance to win a prize, make sure to join the event. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Yoni. Mr. Marcus.
Thank you. I, because this occurred Friday after the agenda was posted, we didn't do anything about Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I don't know if we want to do a moment of silence on her behalf or
Yes, I was going to do that at the end, Mr. Marcus.
Okay, then I will defer to you to do that. And that's the only comments I had for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Mrs. Walker Schuman.
I think Mr. Spitz is next.
Mr. Spitz.
Well, I I don't want to belabor this at this, at this meeting, but I I was listening to the comments that you, Mrs. Hacker, and Mrs. Walker Schuman were making. And I'm not I'm not informed about what comments you made. But it does seem to me that she, if she made comments during a meeting of a city commission, during a meeting, that that would not be the right forum for you, Mrs. Walker Schuman, to to make any comments that that have to do with the, if I understood correctly, the upcoming school election. I think if there's any need for this, that perhaps this should be placed on the knee on the next upcoming regular meeting to give us all a chance to to check out the videotape of that meeting and and see what what it was that you said. I think that what I'm we are all in our own times and in the proper venues. Sure, we have, we have the right to endorse individually candidates. But I think that the venue is very, very important. And and when a board member is attending a commission meeting, a city commission meeting, as the board liaison, it's likely that she will, anything that she says is likely to be interpreted as representative of the board as a whole. So I I do, I think this is kind of a serious matter, and I do have concern about it.
And so we, we, it's all recorded, so you can go ahead and check out the comments that were made. I would like to remind you that back a year ago when we were talking about the calendar issues, and there were some back and forth in the newspapers because of incorrect reporting, and then a week later, commentary that specifically mentioned me and my corrections. The Human Relations Commission had asked me about that and had asked me questions, and we had much exchange that was personal, that was not on behalf of the board. So that actually is a pretty regular occurrence at these meetings. But I I respect your opinion, and you certainly have the right to watch the video and draw your own conclusions.
Do you have any other further comments, Mrs. Walker Schuman, before I move on?
Yes, I would like to, again, congratulate our semifinalists for the National Merit Scholarship Program. I would like to, again, thank the teachers and our staff for working so diligently through these trying times and hope everybody has a healthy and safe Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur holiday.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, on a little different note, I would like to tie a minute to talk about spotlighting the teachers and the programs that they're installing in the classroom with use of technology. I was really excited to see that tonight, and I hope that that will continue in the future because it's one way we can show that teachers that we appreciate them and give them a chance to to illustrate what they do in the classroom. And on that same note, the teachers are being required now to really use technology in a very different way than they probably did in the past. And I bet you that many of them will continue, even when they get back to the classroom, will continue to use it because they will find how much it will change their teaching and how much it will engage them with working with the kids. So I was really very, very thrilled to see that tonight. I'd also like to compliment and congratulate the three semifinalists of the Merit Scholars. And I thought they were wonderful, and I'm so proud of them, and they make us proud. And I know we're going to talk about Ruth Bader Ginsburg in a minute. And I, it brings me to tears because she was my icon, but she, I just have one little statement I wanted to make. She was very, very small a build, but she was very, very giant of influence. And she really, I was, I was once told I was the RBG of Beverly Hills. So I have to tell you, it made me, it really took me for a storm when she passed away.
I just want to say, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I was actually going to say the same thing about the justice. And before I get into that, I just want to say thank you to everyone for today's, for being part of today's meeting. Horseman is having the Multicultural Week this week, and I know that they've worked a lot to make that, make all those activities available to our students. And so I, I really want to thank the PTA and the the staff there. I've heard nothing but great things from the parents about the experience. So along those lines, I want to congratulate all of the students that were here again. And to, again, just to echo the thoughts that Mrs. Marcus has shared to our, to our teachers. They really are doing a phenomenal job in keeping our our students engaged and really moving the district forward. So thank you for that. So I think, yes.
Before you go on, I need a clarification. We've had, we've had numerous, I've seen numerous memos about that the study session for tomorrow morning, is my correct in that that study session has been postponed?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Spitz, that is correct. Thank you. So we are now going to, I think it's very appropriate to remember Chief Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She was a giant in our country, and I think the the history books will remember her as an icon of a leader for the times that she served during this very robust period of length of time that she served as a justice. And we are so much better as a country because of her service and because of her, her wisdom. And, you know, I think it's, it's only appropriate for us to to remember her with, I'm going to say, two minutes of silence. Mr. Marcus, did you want to say something or? Okay, so we'll do two minutes of silence and we will start now. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Thank you for every, for being here tonight and have a good night.